All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we adopted the consent calendar. Agenda item three are reports, and we'll start with our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I wanted to just let you know that our teachers are back. We had our official opening today, and Barbara was there along with Maggie. If you want to speak, you can. But we had a wonderful breakfast, and I think I spoke for about an hour. I went over my time limit, but I had, we had a lot of fun. And just a lot of enthusiasm in the room. Some of the things that I touched upon is who the new guy is, me. Talked a little bit about myself, not a lot. And then Maggie came up and gave some remarks on behalf of the school board, and that was well received. Thank you.
It was brief.
And then we gave thanks to all our summer employees and the food service people that prepared the breakfast, tech support folks, year-round employees, and summer school pairs and teachers. So that was fun. And we had new faces that we introduced, new hires. Each principal came up, and our CTE director came up and introduced new faces in our schools. And then I got a chance to talk about new folks in the central office, which was fun. And then I talked a little bit about why I came out of retirement to come to Summersworth and shared that with folks. And then our focus for the new year. I told the staff today there will be no new district-wide initiatives. We're really going to focus on teaching and learning, looking at our curriculum, which is a long-term thing. But we're going to start off starting to look at curriculum, vertical alignment. We've heard that loud and clear from our administrators as well as our teachers. And also looking at providing supports for our students post-pandemic with regard to social, emotional learning, academics, and focusing on that for our children and young adults. Also talked about my philosophy in terms of some universal truths about human interaction and shared with them my thoughts on that. You'll see it in a video that I'm going to show you in a little bit. It kind of summarizes what that's all about. And we did, I did introduce our Title I curriculum director, Susan Blair. She was well received. People seemed to be really excited about that. And then talked about relationships building amongst not only with students but also among colleagues and working together on behalf of our students. And then I talked a little bit about relationships with parents, relationships with each other, and then I gave some practical advice in this crazy national, state, political world that we live in. Showed a video about what it'd be like if teachers were treated like football players. We had a video about a teacher getting $8 million because she was traded from Ohio to New York. And there was a draft for one, one teacher became an instant millionaire, and his father was a simple football player. And so they kind of got a chuckle out of that, that video, and then wished them well, and they took off to the buildings. I do want to just show you a video that kind of summarizes what I talked about today. We can move this down, and this is posted on our website. I think it's on channel 22. It's going to be, we're trying to get it on all the school websites. It's a message to the community and our parents and students about what, you know, what our priorities are this year. And I want to thank Bill Rogers, who's in the booth back there, just a wonderful teacher, educator, and I'm just amazed that the technology we have for our students, I hope more students take advantage of his class. And I'm hoping I can work with some students to put together a song about snow days. So I'm hoping that we can work with students on that. So with that said, I'm going to step over here and we'll push a button. Hello, students, families, and the Summersworth community. I am Lou Gesinski, your superintendent of schools. On behalf of the school board, faculty, and staff, welcome to the 2023-2024 school year. We all look forward to the return of our wonderful students with great anticipation, hope, and optimism. We also look forward to partnering with their parents, guardians, and community members to support our students' academic, physical, social, and emotional needs in the months ahead. Our great custodians and maintenance staff have worked tirelessly over the summer to clean, repair, and restore all of our school buildings. If you see them around the schools, please thank them. Our school and SAU 56 administrators have been busy hiring the needed people to serve our students. They, along with school and SAU 56 office staff, have ensured the needed instructional supplies are available for our educators to teach and our students to learn. We are well-prepared and ready to embrace the new school year. The city of Summersworth is blessed to have remarkable teachers, paraprofessionals, and other support staff. Many have been here for decades. Their professionalism and dedication to the city's children and young adults know no bounds. They serve our students with their minds and hearts. I am extremely grateful and appreciative of them. My career in public education has spanned five decades. Over this time, I have learned that what educators do can be pared down to one basic concept: engaging in positive relationships with others. I have also learned there are some fundamental, universal truths about building positive relationships. They include the following. One, all people want to be treated with dignity and respect. Two, all people would rather be asked than told. Three, all people want to know why they're being asked to do something. And finally, four, all people would rather have options than threats. I have asked the Summersworth School District faculty and staff to keep this basic concept and these universal truths in their minds when interacting with students, families, their colleagues, and others. I ask you to join us in the same way as we prepare our students for a bright future. We look ahead to an amazing school year. Thank you, Summersworth, for your ongoing support of public education. Wish all of you the very best. Thank you. So that will, that's on our website, and we'll promote that as we go along. So, thank you. And then I asked the principals today and other administrators to just give me their perspectives on the first few days of school with staff, and I'm going to share with you the information. This is about special education. This came to me from Amy Pillsbury and Lorraine Field, which I think I introduced to you at the last meeting. So these two women met with case managers and also the related service providers such as speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists and counselors. They spoke about individual education plans, timelines, and compliance and paperwork. That's really critical when it comes to special education. The case managers do a wonderful job documenting, and we want to make it as seamless as possible for them. There were Medicaid updates. We received Medicaid reimbursements for a lot of services, including related services primarily, and also for individual paraprofessionals. So they went over some Medicaid updates because Amy and Lorraine attended some training this summer. And then they met today with the paraprofessionals. They discussed their roles and also discussed the fact that Summersworth has Title I schools and helping them acquire professional two certifications through the New Hampshire Department of Education. So we want to get them certified, so they're working on that. And then we spoke to them about the potential for training in Medicaid on the next workshop day. And they're very excited, and they were there to listen to folks and hear their concerns and wish them a healthy and happy school year. So that's from the special education administrators. And then at Idlehurst, Idlehurst Elementary School, I actually observed this. There was a mathematics consultant that was brought in and trained the teachers and paraprofessionals on the best practices of mathematics instruction, and included productive and unproductive beliefs about teaching mathematics, levels of mathematics cognitive demand, and the eight student mathematics practices. The consultant also worked with educators about tiered level of interventions. You've probably heard of positive behavior intervention services in the past. There was some discussion around that. And also Kelly Hebert, Idlehurst reading specialist, and Joni Ferland, Title I teacher, spoke with the faculty and staff about the resources that are in place to support both the core reading instruction and interventions as well as Idlehurst M-class pilot, which support our journey into the science of reading. So a lot going on in that particular building. Also at Maplewood, had a chance to go today and visit with some parents and students. But the last two days at Maplewood, according to Principal McNelly, huge success. We have given staff time to organize their rooms and get ready for the first day of school while squeezing in some of our yearly safety training. And I think you're familiar with, this was reviewed with Max. This is our safety and security procedures for crisis situations. So that was reviewed. Max reviewed that with folks and Vice Principal. And then there was a presenter from the Connor Klein Foundation provided a two-hour training on Monday on suicide prevention, which provided a lot of useful tools to use with students when we see signs that a student may need help. And again, Max Ferguson, our assistant principal, led workshops on behavior interventions and emergency protocols using the five actions that the district has adopted. We attended our second day with a meet-the-teacher event in which students, families visited the school, explored their classrooms, and met their classroom teachers before the first day tomorrow. And that was well-attended. I had an opportunity to walk around and see lots of parents, lots of students. And I actually visited my old school, school classroom when I worked for the Stratford Learning Center. It's classroom number one, where I worked my first year in public education as a speech and language pathologist and worked in a preschool program. So it was kind of nostalgic for me, and I remember the library, and it's still there, and it's kind of, it's kind of neat. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about the Summersworth Middle School. This is the first time in three years, according to Jim Lampron, that they've had a full cadre of paraprofessionals, first time in three years, that the beginning of the year with a full, you know, full staff, which is really great. He writes that the 23-24 school year is off to a great start. Staff were welcomed back on Monday, the 28th, and met with breakfast, a staff slideshow, which included pictures of staff members, summer happenings, and blue goodies bag, goodie bags were provided, attached with a sticker that read, "Roses are red, violets are blue, we appreciate all that you do." And all the contents within the bag were blue, including Cool Ranch Doritos, gum, chocolates, and more. Jim really likes, he likes food. He likes to really promote that, so he's great. New and returning staff were introduced to one another, and they took time to review the staff reference binder and some of those logistics. They had a team-building exercise to help staff get to know one another, and they also met and discussed competencies related to PBIS and universal team and rolling out their PBIS program. And then they engaged in front-loading much of the need-to-know. Staff were given time with their teams to prepare for their classrooms. Then Monday evening, which I attended, was well-attended by parents and students. They got some ice cream from Lone Oak, and we had big boxes of ice cream. And I think we went through like six big boxes of ice cream. We had black raspberry, vanilla, chocolate, cookie dough, Oreo, and also chocolate with M&amp;M's. And I think the big hit was the cookie dough and the, and the, and the Oreo. Chocolate was big, too. I tried to push the red raspberry. I was giving extra on that, but the red raspberry was good. And so they, they had the ice cream social, and during that time, there were, there was a great turnout, and the grade levels, essentials, Title I, athletics, SYC, and music, all had information, tables for parents and students to visit. And, and so all the principals throughout the district joined Sue and me, and we served ice cream. It was great. All the principals support each other. It was great to see they're all coming out and helping out with that. So it was a great event. And then on Tuesday, the staff met in the high school cafeteria for district-wide welcome back, which I talked about. Then they met with grade-level teams to prepare interventions and enrichments the first week with students and classroom setup. And then Ann Parsons, the reading specialist for the school, did a brief literacy presentation. Case managers with special ed met with Mrs. Pillsbury and Ms. Field, and, and they also talked about WIN, which is the event, which is called What I Need. It's a time when teachers will personalize instruction to further meet the needs of each learner in the classroom. So there's a lot going on in that school. And then at the high school, according to Principal Tebow, Summers High School had a great start to the school year, and we were very much looking forward to welcoming our students back. As always, we started with our community breakfast. This is an awesome tradition and an opportunity for us to reconnect informally and share a meal. From there, our time was divided between goal-setting and department individual setup and curriculum work. And then they, they had a PBIS boot camp, which they're implementing this year, and focused on PBIS. And then they're excited, and this, I want to mention this, for the freshman orientation will take place tomorrow, and, and to give our ninth graders the opportunity to meet their teachers toward the building, get to know their lockers, all that good stuff, and participate in some fun community-building activities. So I just want to mention, tomorrow, the students arrive at 7:30, and they're going to meet in the gymnasium. I'm hoping to get in there and talk with the students as well, and then they follow, they'll meet with their advisors, go through block scheduling. And then at 12:15, 12:50, I want to go to this one, they have food, music, and fun in the cafeteria on the patio. Kona Ice they're talking about. I have to try this Kona Ice. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm looking forward to having some Kona Ice with the freshmen. And then they'll go to their advisories and then get ready to go home. So that's what's going on tomorrow at the high school. And then CTE has some things going on. They, they talked about reflecting on the CTE's role in K-12 vertical alignment. They're hoping it develops relationships with K teachers as they get ready to go into the CTE program. And allowing our CTE students and spaces to support learning projects, because when you talk about CTE, you really focus on project building, and so hopefully there'll be some connections here with the eighth grades. And they also talked about inventorying equipment and preparing the lab spaces for students in upcoming projects, and then supporting the transition of new staff to our CTE team. So a lot going on. I don't know if you two want to say anything about today? I know I was grateful that you were there. It's up to you. You don't have to.
No, it was, it was great. It was the first time I was, you know, I've attended and was invited, so it was an incredible, I mean, I, looking out at everyone in there, you know, from all across our district, and yeah, seeing just kind of like laughter and levity and kind of just showing up to start the school year was great. Lou, you did great. You did a wonderful job. It really was kind of, you know, being here for a short time, it seems like you've been here for much longer than that, so thank you.
All right, great. I don't know if you want to say anything else. You're good?
It was, it was just a whole lot of good vibes, lots of good feelings, and there was a little dance party, so that was enjoyed by all. And then also, the, he's talking about the video that he showed was KMPL, who, if you don't know, you don't know, but if you do, it's so fun. And, and it was just, it added to a job that is, you know, not always appreciated and understood by everyone. It was just really nice to have that kind of support for everyone, so I was glad to be there.
Thank you for coming. It was nice. So that's it on opening day. And tomorrow, the children arrive, K through nine, and then we're off to the races. My next item, I met with the administrators at the building level and also SAU-wide to talk about getting them to become more involved on some of your standing committees. And so in your packet, I put together, I've got folks to volunteer, and they want to, actually. They've asked to participate. And so going through your list here tonight, you have the budget and review committee, and Katie and I will serve on that committee. That's, that's not changing. And then buildings and grounds, Katie and Jay are going to be on that committee. And then for the educational programs, the committee outreach, Susan Blair, a new hire, a curriculum would like to be there, Liza Coco, and Max Ferguson, and Mike Bluen. So those folks would like to participate in that, in that committee. And then under the negotiations and personnel, it'd be myself and Katie. And then for policy, I think it's really important to get your principals in and have some discussions about policy with you, because they implement those on a daily basis, and so, and it also grows them professionally. Kate Gove, Devin McNeely, Jennifer Spector, and Caitlin Carrington would like to participate on that committee. So if there's no objections, they'd love to, to work with you. Okay. All right. And then I sent an email out to you, just informational email today, and I asked you not to respond, and you did great. You didn't respond to me. I've asked that we, I've asked Maggie if we could take it off the agenda tonight because it's being reviewed again by the attorney for the agency that's going to, you know, partner with us. So we could hold off on this, and it's more for information. I'm going to sign off on it, but I wanted you to see it before I sign off on it. So I think that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving to agenda item 3.2, our business administrators report. Thanks, Katie.
Yes. So included in your packet is the FY 22-23 budget of where we ended at the end of the year. Thank you all for coming in to sign my end-of-year reporting. That's all been submitted to the state. As you can see from my report, we ended the year with an expenditure balance of $325,000. But as you recall, we are using $100,000 of that as revenue going into our FY 24 current budget. It was approved during the budget process, so that leaves $225,000 as the expenditure balance, which is right in line with what I was anticipating. I think at your last report, it was like 205 is what I was expecting. So it's right in line with what we were anticipating. As far as the revenue goes, we did have unanticipated revenue, $416,000. You are not authorized to spend any unanticipated revenue. You can only spend up to your expenditures and what was appropriated, so this money automatically just gets returned. Most of it was $132,000, which was passed by legislation. It was a refund from New Hampshire Retirement, and the intent of that money was to return to and offset the tax rate. So that's what will happen with that. The rest of it was special ed aid tuition for preschool, then tuition for our students who attend our career and tech programs. And I, if you remember, I'm not sure, but during the budget process for this current year, we adjusted those revenue lines and brought them up to be more in line with what we've been receiving over the years, so that we won't have this unanticipated revenue going forward. So that's what was done in creating this budget, so that we don't have that fluctuation. Once these funds are returned to the general fund, the city determines what's used, how it's used, whether it goes back to the fund balance or it's used to offset taxes. Once the tax rate is set, then we can have, we'll have that final figure of what the tax rate impact is on these funds. And then the $100,000 we'll use as revenue going into this year. These are unaudited at this point. Typically, we don't have many changes once the audit happens, but if we do, I'll let the board know. Also in my report, under food service, I did meet with building admin and representatives from Fresh Picks on the 21st of August. We went over our current meal charging policy, because as I mentioned at our last meeting, we, last year was our first year of really implementing that policy, because it was created during COVID when meals were free for everyone. So we have some recommended changes that we're going to be bringing forward to the policy committee. We're still working on, you know, the logistics of that, and then once we're done, we'll be forwarding to the policy committee to, to look at, so that we can get those changes made. It's basically just rewording it. Some of the things, the thresholds of money that we had in there just aren't feasible. They were really small thresholds, so we're going to just adjust those. We also brainstormed some ideas to try to get families to fill out the free and reduced lunch forms, to try to help us. So we threw around maybe doing a raffle, so everyone who fills out the form will get put into the raffle and win, win something, so maybe we can try to promote people to fill out the forms. So stay tuned for more information on that. We're still working out the details. Also, our district was selected to receive some local purchasing funds through the local Food for School Cooperative Agreement with the State of New Hampshire through USDA. These funds will be used to purchase New England grown and produced foods for our food service program. So we received just over $12,500. The board has to approve us receiving these funds in order to utilize them. So I did put a little information sheet in your packet outlining the program. There's no cost or match or anything for the district. It's just funds that are going to come into our program. Fresh Picks will use them to purchase the local foods, and they'll keep track and give everything to the district needs. So I just, later on in the agenda, it's just the board needs to approve accepting these funds. And then for FY 23-24 revenue, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are going to get some additional adequacy. I did receive the final number, so they were originally estimating like 1.9. It is 1.6 million that we're going to get in additional funds. So we're in the process of collecting information, meeting with admin to get some lists together of items that we want to purchase and use these funds for. We need to schedule a budget committee meeting probably next week sometime to go over those items, and then the full, it'll come back to the full board based on the budget committee's recommendation. And then it will go through the process of going to the city finance committee to get their approval, and then the city council to approve the supplemental appropriation, which requires two meetings for a first reading and then a public hearing. So it's going to move fast, because we have to get it all done before the tax rate gets set. So stay tuned for meetings on that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. The policy that we have to look at for, was it for food and?
It's for meal charging.
Meal charging, okay. Just got that one down.
I have a red line draft working, that we're working on, that I will submit to the policy committee.
Great, all right. All right, moving on to our agenda item 3.3, our city council update. Councilor Austin.
I have no report this evening, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
I could. Just to circle back to the superintendent's report, Superintendent Gesinski, did you happen to have any update for the public on the special education busing? I just, I had told, I had mentioned earlier that I would relay or that you would report something.
So I talked with, sorry, that needs to go on. I talked to our two specialty coordinators and Judy Berry, who helps with transportation, and they notified for a student that some parents have been calling, and they said they would return those calls to parents. And if they're not getting called, they can feel free to call my office, and we'll get, we'll get on it. But that's the latest update. Typically, at the beginning of the school year, you have some of these things that occur. I think perhaps, I was told that the company may have reached out and couldn't connect with folks, and so they're, they're working to get that solved. So, and I appreciate you bringing that to my attention today.
All right, great. All right, agenda item 3.4, our student representative reports. I hear that they'll be joining us in September.
Yes.
Going, moving forward to committee reports. I don't believe there are any, but I'll go through the list of them. Reminder to start setting your dates, committee chairs. Budget and Revenue Committee.
Thank you, Chair Larson. The Budget and Revenue Committee has not met since the last meeting. As was indicated earlier, we are in the process of setting up a meeting hopefully within the next week.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee, Board Member Hackworth.
We have also not met, and I'm sure we'll get on that in the next week or two.
Great. Educational Programs, Community Outreach, Board Member Wentworth.
We have not met, Madam Chair, and that's going to get set up soon.
Wonderful. Policy Committee, Board Member Tiana.
Yep, the Policy Committee has not met. Actually, I think we were the only committee that didn't meet at all the entire summer. So I think I may have been the, no, you guys, we didn't, oh, I think I was the only board member who didn't have a committee meeting all summer. So yay me. Thank you. We'll set up meetings this week.
Okay.
For, for, I will send out emails this week to set up meetings.
Perfect, thank you. All right, at least for this, this first, the end of the year, to the end of the year. There are no presentations this evening. There's no policies for first or second reading. Under New Business, agenda item 7.1 is to approve the acceptance of the USDA local foods for schools cooperative agreement funds. That was just discussed. Yes, Gordon.
Can I make a motion to accept the local food for schools cooperative agreement funds from USDA and New Hampshire Department of Agricultural Markets and Food?
A second. Okay. Right, any discussion on this?
Yeah, no, I just, I did have a clarification. So Katie, you said that Fresh Picks was going to be managing this effort, right?
Yeah, so the check will come into the district, and then there's some record-keeping, so they'll, they'll submit to me all the foods that are purchased when the food service department from the state comes down, and they always come like every three years to do an onsite. I'll have to produce those things of what we purchased. Yes, and so they manage all of that.
And so is this something that, I don't, is this a new program, or is this some, so this is sort of brand-new this year?
Yes.
So we don't know if it's something that'll be, continue?
Nope. It says, it says in this sheet that I sent out that after the money's spent this year, it'll be up to the food service director or us to determine if we want to continue to procure the food from local vendors.
Okay. And then the money coming from this grant won't have any impact on the free and reduced lunch, any, anything else? Because it's simply just?
It's simply just using the funds to purchase local foods from local New England vendors.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. All right, all in favor of approving the acceptance of these funds, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Funds are accepted. Agenda item 7.2, this is the author- Agenda item 7.2, this is the authorization for additional compensation for certain long-term substitutes per policy GCG. I'll turn it over to you, Lou.
And I can speak to this. So I've met with Mr. McNeely and Mr. Ferguson, Principal McNeely and Vice, Vice Principal Ferguson. And the school district has had a real difficult time hiring a long-term substitute to cover a three-month maternity leave for a grade three teacher. And so the position has been advertised for over five months with no applicants until a few days ago. And we have a qualified candidate who has worked for the district in the past. However, the individual will not take the position at the regular substitute rate. And I think it's $85 for the first 20 days, and it goes up to $95 after that. And since this is a long-term leave, the teacher maternity leave is not making the lesson plans for the substitute to implement, so it's a little different. And we really need, we really need a teacher to begin the school year for our students in that grade, at that grade level. So you have a policy, a policy GCG that allows the superintendent to hire a substitute at a higher substitute rate due to extenuating circumstances with board approval. That's your new policy. So given that, you know, time is of the essence, school starts tomorrow, and when I sent this out to you was, you know, next week. And, and our students need a teacher, I'm requesting you allow me to exercise my authority with your approval as per the policy. I will bring the person in on a master step one per diem rate of $238.32. Now, if we don't do this, my fear is that we will be without a teacher for our children. And the person would like to, that we'd like to hire is willing to work for three months. And that's, you know, there's many people want to work for the year. So she's willing to work for the three-month period. I also fear that we may not be able to attract another candidate willing to work three months. So as a result, it will force me to look to hire somebody for the school year instead. And that's not good use, you know, of our, of our money. So this will be much more expensive. So I'm asking you to give me the authority to hire this, this person for three months at a higher rate due to extenuating circumstances. I hope that all makes sense to you.
Yeah, yeah. Board Member Tierney, question?
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. So I believe you mentioned that this is a teacher who has taught before for us. What, what did she teach?
It was elementary level. I don't know, I don't recall the exact, I can email you and let you know.
No, that's okay. But it was elementary. So she has elementary experience. And what is there, I'm just thinking third graders, right? So these are little kiddos. So is there this sort of, like a transition plan sort of in place? Because they're going to get used to this person for three months and then?
Yeah, it's going to have to be worked out.
Yeah.
And Principal McNeely, McNeely will have to address that.
Yeah.
So yeah, there would need to be a transition, because it's, you know, it's the first three months with one person.
Right. Well, and especially, you know, little kid, like they, you know, they form attachments, right? So I guess I'm thinking, now, how are the parents going to be communicated with, for the parents of this, this particular class?
Well, if we, if we get the vote to move forward, then I can, you know, authorize him to, to make the contacts and get information out to the parents.
Okay. Okay.
This is for a standard, there's teachers that get coverage.
Right.
This is every year for teachers that have children. So I think it's a pretty, it's versus like above and beyond, or detrimental to the children. It's like not enough of, beyond. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, can, can I respond to that, though? No, I, that's a fair, that's a fair statement. I wasn't, and, and I wasn't like, I wasn't thinking anybody was going to freak out. I was just thinking it's the beginning of the year, and for, you know, for little kids that might be like, oh, wait, I, you know, I get used to this person, and then, that's all. That's all.
Board Member Marsh?
I do appreciate the answers to those questions. I think that it's helped for me. I will say that I think that this, the proposal is, it's fair to the long-term substitute with experience. It's also fair to those students for that extended period of time. And it's fair to the teacher who will be returning as well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent for additional compensation for the, for our long-term substitute.
Motion to? Motion to offer this long-term substitute an increased compensation per policy.
Authorize the superintendent.
Authorize the superintendent.
I have a motion for you.
You do have it right there, and I, I don't have it right in front of me. Is it right here? Thank you. Motion to authorize the superintendent to offer additional compensation for a certain long-term substitute as per policy GCG.
Wonderful. Just a second.
Second.
Oh, there you go. All right, any, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Authorization. We have no, agenda item number eight, there's no old or unfinished business. We have some future meeting dates that are our standard board meeting dates in September. It's the 12th and 26th. If I can see anything else here. Closing comments by visitors, saying none. I, I'm going to turn to the board if there's closing comments by board members. Yes, Demers?
Ironically, me whose timing are 20 minutes here. I just wanted to give the flip experience of the first week of school. I have kids in almost every building right now, which has been kind of crazy to get to see. And I've had to, as you can imagine, be in a lot of places, as you were describing. But I've also got to catch the vibe. And like you said, it was all good vibes. I haven't seen this type of enthusiasm in a really long time. I could have told you there was a dance party, but not because I spoke to anybody on this board or Lou. It was just because I was at a volleyball scrimmage earlier, watching the JV play, and some of the staff, some of the customer, like, the people were talking about it. They're like, can you believe this? Like, this happened? Like, I think, I know that the black-eyed peas got played. And so I just want to give you that feedback, because that's unique. I've, I've got a kid in high school, so I've been doing this for a lot of years. And that's not usually what people are coming up and talking to me about, especially staff and whatnot. So I wanted to say thank you to the board for all the hard work we've all been doing. Katie, obviously, for jumping through all the hoops we ask you to pay for. Celeste, your, your teachers, and just, it hasn't been easy, and it's been really encouraging to bounce through these buildings as a parent, and just know that the kids are going to a great environment. Not that they haven't been, because I know that no matter what's going on, that the kids, I've never felt like my kids weren't getting what they needed. But the, the conversations that, they've shifted, and I, I can appreciate that, and wanted to just give that feedback. We have a lot of good things going, a lot of enthusiasm for learning, for athletics, for just extracurricular in general. And those are things that are so important in this community because of, you know, to go back to some of the demographics that got listed at our last school board meeting by our visitor, like, it's, it's a tough demographic that we have to get excited here with limited resources and this and that. And I just feel like we're moving in the, in a really good direction. And then I say this lovingly to our community, to our teachers, to people sitting on this board that maybe have had gut reactions throughout a few of these positive things we're doing. If you're hearing and seeing this video, or you're listening to the black-eyed peas and you're on our staff and faculty today, and it's giving you reason for like internal negativity, or like, ugh, see? Look at what they're doing. This is dumb. You're the reason we're doing this. And I just want to make that clear. You are the outsider now. The positivity is running rampant. So get on board, or don't.
Anyone else? Final comments? Yes, Board Member Clark?
I just wanted to wish the K through nine a great first day of school tomorrow, and all the teachers. And I've heard, I've heard great things about the ice cream social and the community coming together as a whole. And then sophomore through senior, hope they have a great first day. The following day, we're excited for this, beginning of this new school year, so I'm thankful.
Board Member Tierney?
Thank you. So I don't know if any of you, the rest of the board members, got to listen to the presentation last week that the city council hosted. I know Maggie was in the audience, I was watching from home because I was sick. But it was an interesting, it was a very interesting presentation about the public's funding in the state and dealing with adequacy and everything. And I'm not a numbers person, so I'm not even going to go into anything about like, wow, I think this, or I think that. But I do appreciate is that there was a, you know, there's a genuine discussion, especially at the end. I mean, you know, presenter definitely heard some challenging questions. And I just, I, you know me, I like it when we don't have just the one partisan point of view about something, which I will say, I admit, I was a little concerned. I was, I was cautiously, you know, optimistic that it wouldn't be. And, and I think that the presenter did a fairly just straightforward, neutral perspective. And I think some of the stuff came out in the question, so that's fine, because there were people from, coming from different angles. And I think that it's not an easy solution, or just, you know, there's no one easy right answer. But I think it's important information for the, for people in the community to understand, to be thinking about. So I appreciate that. I just want to say that.
Board Member Marsh, followed by Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the superintendent's opening welcoming message to the district. I appreciate those words of wisdom. Thank you. Welcome back, Team SAU 56. Administrators, teachers, all the support team, teams. Every new year is an opportunity to build from the year before and to innovate forward, and I'm looking forward to that. I wish the students all the best to experience their individual successes, to lay the foundation of maximum success, maximum self-sufficiency for their future, and collective community of compassion for the future of the greater good. As adults, this is our moment, and let us continue to engage where we, where we can and when we can. For our schools, for our sports, for our children, for our seniors, for those feeling down, and for those who need a hand up. So let's model to our children and learn from our, and learn from them this school year. And stuck to my notes to try to minimize my time, so thank you. You're welcome.
I also just want to say congratulations to all the incoming students. Another year, go Hilltoppers. Thanks to Lou for your guidance this, this summer. Thanks to the board for your hard work this summer. And it's night, I wasn't able to go to, to the opening, but it's so heartening to hear the vibe has changed. And if we can just keep that, you know, community spirit, because we're a community, and it's just so nice that we, you know, got over a difficult time and, and we're, you know, back together again, which I, I just am so, so happy about. So I just wanted to say thank you, and welcome to all the new students coming in. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. I think that I share a lot of those, those sentiments, and I think what I was thinking about today and going forward is that, you know, one of our, I believe I've said this before, but feels like a good time to say it, is that one of our greatest freedoms that we have, I believe, is how we respond to things. And the response from this community has been overwhelmingly supportive and positive, and focused on the students, and our, and our community being whole and connected and collaborative. So I really just want to show my, and speak to my appreciation of that. It's, 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 it's large, and at times, it's just one of those things that shows what integrity really is. And this is it, this is the beginning of the school year. I feel incredibly optimistic, I said that on behalf of the board. I know it's kind of, you know, every year, but this year just feels, you know, coming